Order of the regular meeting of the common councils of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, November 8, 2016.
Where we got here, Don Francis?
Here.
Tom Noel?
Here.
And Gillian?
Here.
Ali Nichols?
Here.
Amy Sebofson, Ashton? Ashton Westerby?
Here.
I would just like to announce that the polls close at 8:00 PM, so if anybody watching this this evening hasn't voted yet, you have an opportunity to go and do that. The other thing that I would just announce right now also is that there's been a lot of discussion about the proposed budget, which I think is a really good thing. And we do have on the platteville.org webpage some question and answer comments. So if you go to the page of platteville.org, it's on the right-hand side, you'll see that there's a contract budget. So please go ahead and take a look at that. Again, we, as council people, we're also all listed on the webpage, and you certainly can contact us if you have questions as well. First item this evening is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would refer separate discussion in action. Council minutes from the October 17 special meeting and the October 25 regular meeting of the council. B, payment of bills. C is financial report for our council. B, appointments to boards and commissions. I have two this evening. One is a reappointment to the community safety arts committee of Lynnburg, and affecting to the redevelopment, redevelopment authority board, Karen Lynch. Also in the packet licenses, the three-year and two-year licenses to sellers of Oklahoma. I'll permit for speed closing for the Platteville Regional Chamber for Saturday, July 29, 2017. And noon until 3:00 PM for the Southwest Music Festival. And G is a letter opposing the proposed Platteville route for the Cardinal Hickory-Greek transmission.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and we vote.
Ross?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Gillian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Amy Sebofson?
Yes.
Ashton Westerby?
Yes.
Okay, thirty. Over is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I don't have any requests this evening for annual speed. I would just note that we have a lot of WTP students in our tenured this evening. I understand that there are some professors that suggest they come to these meetings, and we appreciate your presence. Next is board commissioner committee minutes. Museum boards, you want to listen?
Nothing to add.
Restored preservation commission feeling?
Yes, last weekend was open house for five or six houses. Would point out that the most notable house in the city of Platteville is the Burke House, the corner of Main Street, A&amp;L, right across from the library. Thank you.
Other reports in our packet include the city attorney item master report for October, also the October water and sewer financial report, and the airport financial report, as well as department progress reports. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions, comments on department progress reports. I'll start at the bottom of the list, and that's police. The progress and information relates about the new 9/11 equipment and software. And an uninformed person, how I could be informed?
Very good. That was a CIP project that we proposed last year, and it's taken quite some time to evaluate and select a vendor. And now it's taking even longer to get the process finalized. It's basically, we piggyback the 911 equipment that Grant County utilizes. So we were tied to using essentially the same vendor that Grant County does. Ultimately, they selected CenturyLink, and we're going to be installing that equipment, hopefully December, week of December 5th, and doing training, and then going live with it December 12th.
So that's replacement of all the equipment?
For the 911 portion of the dispatch center, yes.
And the software too?
It's all one package.
Okay.
And it's replacing very dated equipment that was using Windows XP. So I mean, it's quite outdated.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have questions or to comment for the city manager. I noted in the reading that you did guiding principles for the downtown task force as far as parking. My first question is, are these available to the council?
Yes, we are behind in producing minutes for the downtown task force, in part because I am the only staff member assigned to it, and I've been pulled some different directions. But I'm happy to pull out the draft, guiding draft.
And then, I guess, comments. I recommend that the way that I planned on this task force was being formed, that they do a survey as far as where the tenants are parking, the tenants that are living downtown. So that's one thing I'm wondering about, whether any survey is going to be done. And my next comment is, I believe that there should be designated parking space or spaces for the tenants, where when the tenant, future tenant goes to a landlord and asks about where is the parking, and they're told that, well, these are the possible spots as far as parking, there's enough space in those spots. And so that's what I'm getting at by saying designated parking spots for the tenants. And I've heard that some landlords say, well, park out in the neighborhood. I don't agree with that. I think that's an imposition upon especially the people that are homeowners that shouldn't be, parking should not be in the neighborhood. So I'm personally interested in seeing that this task force develop designated parking so that it's not parking within the neighborhood. I've been especially concerned about parking along Bailey Street. I brought that up to some of the council members a few times, and I think that should be made. I've been parking, or some arrangement made, or no signature made, for the parking basis factor there. Thank you.
I would just note that when the downtown parking task force was initiated, the council approved a charter which outlined specific tasks for the task force. I'm not sure that either, I would have to go back, I don't know if there's that level of specificity within that charter, if the council would like to modify that charter. They could do that, but I've actually been allowing the task force themselves to determine their work within the confines of the charter that was developed by the city council.
Well, may I get back, though?
Sure.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? All right, seeing them, move on to first action item, which is ordinance 1617, creating section 348, providing for motor vehicle registration fee.
Thank you. So as you know, staff has been working with the Department of Transportation to establish a motor vehicle registration fee, also known as a wheel tax. The first step of this process is for the common council to pass the ordinance, creating the fee, and then we can go ahead and move forward with the Department of Transportation as far as getting it on the annual registration fee. It does take 90 days after the Department of Transportation receives a request in order for all the forms and everything to be updated. So our goal is to get this to them as soon as it is hopefully passed, and then we would hopefully start collecting in March of 2017.
Questions, anyone?
Bicycle is not a vehicle?
Not according to the DOT for this purpose.
Does it have a motor or scooter?
On the FAQ that you got from the Department of Transportation, it does have certain guidelines as far as what qualifies. A motorcycle would not in this case.
I wanted to bring it up because bicycle is used to create, you can't write for bicycles.
So bicycle doesn't have an annual registration fee?
Well, my next question is under six, B. It says all vehicles, which is what state of Chicago is section 341.26 for a fee of $5. Do you know what's in that category? It's on the ordinance page, second page.
I believe that is referencing transfers of title that come, for instance, upon the death of an individual, the titles being transferred to, for instance, a spouse. I'm working off my recollection, so...
It's an exemption, so it says for a fee of $5.
I was also thinking that it could possibly be like for the people that have the antique license plates.
For vehicles? Well, those cost $150, I'd like to try.
What happens is, Ken, when a, let's say, a husband and wife own a vehicle together, and let's say they hold it in wife's name and husband, and the husband dies, then there's a provision for $5 that that surviving spouse can get the title transferred into her name. And they're saying...
Actually, I pulled up section 341.26, and there's all kinds of weird little things like blood bank vehicles, vehicles operated by the Civil Air Patrol, there's like a whole list of A through N or whatever.
Oh, good, thanks.
So the point is that those are exempt from the annual city of Platteville vehicle registration fee, and they are exempted by the state. It is not a decision that the city of Platteville makes.
For the chief of police, what is the fee for a bicycle license?
He said $1.
$1? Okay. We don't get many of those, do we? Or I saw the number $25.
I also want to just add to that to defend bicycles. Yes, they use the roads, but the wear and tear that they contribute to the road is significantly less than motor vehicle does. So just all things considered, bicycles, they're relatively small portion of wear and tear on roads.
Well, I understand that, I just was bringing up if your opinion's right on, in a sense, you can say, well, we take advantage of the stop sign and what?
But we'd rather still have bicycles on the road because they use a lot, they contribute a lot less wear and tear. If we had only bicycles on the roads, we'd only need to replace the roads like once every 40 years or something, right? We wouldn't need to have such a, well, I keep, that number was arbitrary, but...
That's a good point, and an important thing in this is that we're not giving any special fee from collards, trucks, trucks that are mainly contributors to break down the road. I'm not anti-business, but that's the nature of it. Okay, I think over my question.
I make the motion, we adopt ordinance number 1617, creating section 3.36, providing for a motor vehicle registration fee in the city of Platteville.
How, second?
We have a motion and a second, and we vote.
Ross?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Gillian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sebofson?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
1430?
All right, next action item is contract 1416, cleaning services for 2017 to 2019.
Yes, staff sent out requests for proposal for cleaning services for City Hall, Library, Senior Center for calendar years 2017 to 2019. We included the three locations from our previous contract, plus alternate bids for the police and museum facilities. There were five responses. The police department and museum asked to decline being included in this contract. So the cleaning services are for the City Hall administrative offices here in this building, the senior center, and the library. And it's based on a square foot cleaning price, based on information that was requested by the council. We compared contracted service with cost of wages and fringes for part-time staff custodians, and found very little difference based on that. The consensus was to go with the contracted service. So staff recommends award of contract 14-16 cleaning service to Sparkling Clean Cleaning Service, had a bid of $4,400 per month for all three facilities. I believe you have received a letter from the library board about a request that they've had. If you have questions, I'll be able to answer some, or Jesse from the library.
Is that a new letter from the library board? What's the name?
I was told that the library board presented a letter to the, to the common council. I may be incorrect.
Email.
Email.
Email, okay.
But I would be interested in hearing what Jesse has to...
Yeah, well, you sent the email yesterday?
The library board president sent it, I think sometime over the weekend, November 4th.
Well, uninformed, I didn't read my email today.
Okay.
But I had a good time working outside.
Good for you. So the bottom line is that while we're in the current facility, the contract has us paying the price to clean the new facility. Does that make sense? I struggle to explain it. But basically, we're requesting that the city council kind of reassess how the cleaning contract fees are distributed, so that we're cleaning based on square footage of the facility that's actually being cleaned. Does that make sense?
It's going to be cleaned on basis square footage?
Right.
Okay. But then, the end is for future library?
Right.
Correct.
Well, one of the bids.
The low bid.
Yes.
One of the bids just uses the future library square footage.
The bid that we're considering is on square footage.
Right.
Well, my question, how least fully simply comparing hiring a city employee versus the lending firm. I talked with Howard about this, he said he's putting in two 25 hours time of the week, that's what it compares, less 50.
Correct.
Just the benefits, and there's also vacation time that come out, so it doesn't make it very economical to go as a city employee. And also, I said to Howard, I don't particularly even hiring an employee at $15 an hour. I'd like to make sure they get a living wage.
I have a question. I think according to some of the information we got, the library's budget this year actually had increased amounts of money for utilities. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so why can't you just defer that increased amount that you didn't spend for utilities this year because the new library wasn't open in October, like projected? So you have, you should have extra money from October, November, and December that is unspent, that you can just defer to pay this.
Right, my apologies, I thought you meant for the 2017 budget. We did request an increase for 2017, but we didn't in 2016. We do anticipate there will be some funds that could potentially be carried over into 2017, and that is what we would look to be using to cover the cost of this increase.
Okay, I need to be refreshed on this. Low bid, why is the sparkling clean the low bid? Howard, can you explain the math to me again?
Sure.
For the hours of service versus total cost per month?
It's a, it's a cost per month issue. The idea here is that this contract is a 36-month contract, and over the life of the contract, sparkling clean will be the lowest overall cost. If you were just looking...
To the same service, like, so the same cleaning standards, the same expectations?
Yes. Yes. The next lowest bidder, high clean, if we were only looking at 2017 and not the full package, we would have to be in the current library building until July to make them the low bidder, the low price for 2017 only.
So did we calculate, oh, I'm sorry, Howard, so just, if they're the lowest bidder, would that lowest cost thus be spread throughout three different buildings relatively equally? So what's the difference to the library? I mean, if we, how do I want to say that? Is the library actually spending more money, or does it just seem like the library is spending more money because it's spread equally over every month?
It's...
Do they bid each segment separately?
We had put in, we had put in a, a portion in the bid where a bidder could give a different cost for when the library is in the current facility or in the new facility. The second low bidder, high clean, did so. They had a smaller amount, you know, 38, 90, whatever it is, in, for those months that you're in the current library, and then $6,400 a month once they're in the new facility. Sparkling clean decided that they would go with the same price whether we were in the smaller facility or in the new larger facility.
So would we average that out for the library if we went with the second highest bidder, high clean, for the 17 month, or how many months, 36 months of contract?
Yes.
Okay, we went with high clean for the library for 36 months, how much would that cost the library versus if we went with sparkling clean for the 36 months?
I'd have to run the calculations, but for years 2018 and 2019, high clean would be far and above what sparkling clean would be. And the only difference, the difference is, in 2017, if we were in the current facility through, through the end of June, then, then high clean would be cheaper in 2017 only. But over the life of the 36 months, we would have to be in the current library until like the middle of 2018 in order to, in order to have high clean as the cheaper overall contract.
So Jesse, did you do that math for the 36 months of the high clean versus 36 months of the sparkling clean?
No, I did not.
I feel lost in saying these two numbers, because what I'm hearing Howard say is, you don't have the exact number in front of us, but when you did the math, it seemed to you that sparkling clean was cheaper over the 36-month period. So you would save money by going, the library would save money by going with sparkling clean? It would just be aggregated differently?
Yes.
Okay, knowing that, does the library board still have concerns?
I think so.
Yeah?
I can't speak because...
Yeah, it was the board that made the decision.
But yeah, I think the underlying concept is that the bid would, you know, we're not saying to rebid the contract or anything, but that, you know, if we do stay in the current facility, we will be paying double while we're there.
But you will be saving money in the long run?
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that. So it's not if you, it's money coming from the same place either, really?
Right.
It's just going it out over a different time period in a different way? Okay. Thank you, Jesse.
And if the library board wanted to, they could have asked to not be involved in this one.
Exactly.
They did separately, and they did not ask for that?
Well, there was a little maternity leave in there that may have impacted our decision to just go with the contract at this time, but in the future, we'll be investigating other options as well.
But odds are good that the more square footage being hired out by a contract, the cheaper the price in the end likely. I mean, we don't know that unless we go up for bid, but...
Well, and the board expressed confidence that, you know, this company will certainly meet our needs, and so that's not by any means a concern.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse.
I make the motion, we award contract 1416 cleaning services to Sparkling Cleaning Service. It's a three-year contract, the price is $4,400 a month, for three facilities, including the City Hall, the Senior Center, and the library. A second? The motion in a second?
Ross?
Yes.
Francis?
No.
Noel?
No.
Gillian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sebofson?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
1430?
All right, we're onto information in discussion contract 1316, snow and ice removal on the right-hand sidewalk, snow removal, paths.
Okay. Onto another fun topic that I hope we don't need to use for quite a while. Every year, we contract out snow removal on sidewalks in front of properties that do not shovel out walks. Discharge plus a $20 administrative fee per parcel is billed to the owner. We provided bid packages to five local firms who worked with the city before. We received one bid from Four Seasons Landscaping at $20 per square foot or $40 minimum for snow only. Hard-packed snow and ice removal, 25 cents per square foot or $55 minimum. That last year, we had some concerns about snow removal, and we worked with council members at that time regarding our policies. And so I've also included information on what our previous procedures were, what I believe, we'll paraphrase the council guidance from last year, and one of the big ones is to give warnings to people prior to shoveling. The other is enforce when the snow depth is two inches or greater. The other, the third one was if an area is less than 50% developed, do not shovel unless there's evidence of sidewalk usage in that area, and to adjust the procedures accordingly. What our, what our recommended new procedure would be is that we would document the snow events, as we've always done. 24 hours after snowfall of two or more inches, we would verify that with a photo out in front of City Hall. And then, public works staff would look at all sidewalks within the city. If there's a potential violation, staff would document the address of the potential violation and fill out information on a door hanger, which is enclosed. And just, that's, that's the reminder that we would give people. And then, in essence, the owner occupant would have 24 hours to correct the potential violation. So after that second 24-hour period, we would check the weather, make sure that there isn't an imminent snowfall again, and then we would be giving to our contractor the list of addresses that we document. At that point, the contractor checks those addresses. If the contractor comes to an address on that list that, and it hasn't been corrected, then they follow their normal procedures, they document before and after shoveling, and present that invoice to the city with the photos as proof. If, if the people shovel their walks after they receive the door hangers, then there's no action, contractor goes to the next place. So that's, that's what our proposal is, to go along with our snow and ice removal contract.
The door hangers look really nice, you guys.
Jody?
Thanks, Jody, for...
Thanks, Jody, you're great. Um, Howard, I have a question. Why do you think we're only getting one bid for this? That's interesting, at least we had two last year, right, at least?
Yes. Um, last year, we had a, we had a discrepancy with the second bidder. Um, they wanted to, um, they wanted to, um, begin shoveling on a Sunday, for example, and it wasn't in our contract and, and we ended up, um, throwing out their bid as unresponsive.
Right.
So my guess is that they decided not to submit a bid this year.
I think that's interesting that we're not getting more bids.
And does this, um, my understanding was the big document Fisher was not going to limit people to not shoveling on a Sunday? Is that the case?
Um, if that was the council's direction, then, then I made a mistake and left that part in.
I remember extensive debate, is that what we decided?
I, if-
I don't know, I remember debate about the whole Sunday thing.
Debated it a lot.
And I, I thought that it was the council's position and if they wanted to shovel Sunday, why shouldn't tell them they couldn't? But-
I wonder if, um, after that debate, there was a subsequent work session in which you sort of reworked the whole, um, paradigm under which we were doing snow removals? So I'm not sure that it was as applicable with the, uh-
Agreed.
With the new warning system?
I might have some gender issues about that meeting. I just remember extensive debate about the Sunday issue.
I would agree that there was extensive debate. I do not remember that, that there was a consensus to do that, but I could be wrong as well.
I do know that when we had that work session to talk about all of this, all of our snow removal policy, we came up with a really strong consensus from that meeting that I feel was what we moved forward with, right? So it probably had overridden the Sunday conversation when I got to. Do we have any other questions?
Howard, for the searching for the potential violation, how many staff are looking?
The, the idea, the intent is that, uh, one staff member would, um, circle the city, um, and, and look at all of the sidewalks to see what sidewalks are, um, are in potential violation.
Can I each spot they stopped and fill out the door here?
Correct.
Has there been any, uh, ideas about maybe using a new website or a website for the community to offer some sort of alert to it similar to, you know, how you can tell a light that there's a light up?
I believe we currently utilize Nixle, um, to alert folks that we've got, uh, snow movement. Uh, but we do the website as well.
I, I mean, a community member could say, "I'm walking, I'm two houses down" and I would like to tell the city ahead of time if it's supposed to be waiting and not getting to-
Sure, I, I mean, the website will have contact, um, and we could potentially put a form on there. It isn't the type of, uh, a lot of cities have a, a software now where you're sort of able to use a web app and take photos and, 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 and report through a specialized software. That, that is a part of this, the, our website upgrade.
Sure, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Actually, will there be anything, um, in the water bill just as we're trying to avoid snow? Or something we've done before? Just as we're getting into the season, like make sure you're aware of-
We have, uh, we have things that will be going into the five-three-eight-one-eight and, uh, and other locations, uh, website and other things plug for five-three-eight-one-eight. Um, and, uh, uh, so hopefully the word will get out to people, um, through various means.
Anyone else?
Well, Don asked a question about looking at the city. How long does that take? Look at all the sidewalks in the city, one person?
I don't know yet.
Well, I'm looking at previous experience.
Um, I don't know that the city staff has ever done that. In the past, uh, we would put it on to the contractor to- to identify those locations. And in the past, the contractor would identify the locations and then take the before and after based on the guidance, uh, the initial guidance that it needs to appear as though the, the sidewalk has been unshovelled. Um, and then any discrepancies would be adjudicated by the public work staff. The idea here is that, you know, if, if a person, at least in the initial go-around, if a person did not shovel their walk at all, the city and its contractor would do it. If it appeared as though the, the property owner or whatever shoveled and there may have been drifting or, or other ways for that sidewalk to, to get filled back in, then we tell the contractor to, uh, avoid that one and, uh, we, we look at that for a potential second or third time around, not our, not on the initial go-around.
So this could be a significant unknown cost, I mean, for the city? Unknown as far as amount?
Um, in time only, um, you know, we serve adding staff to perform this duty. But again, this was based on the direction provided by the council at the work session we had last spring. And you might remember at the time, we had looked at, we benchmarked several cities with respect to, to what the best practice was and based on kind of the results of that survey, the direction of the council had been that they thought that we should model what other cities did in terms of providing the warning, um, to our residents before, um, what used to be a pretty hefty bill, um, from the contractor because the time to actually circle the city was built into the fee cost, so.
Other questions? All right, that's for information and discussion, um, until next time. Uh, the next one is ordinance amending section two oh five council salary.
The council, um, reached a consensus at an October seventeen budget work session to eliminate council salaries in a good faith effort to assist with the budget going forward. Um, a limitation is that under state law, the salary paid to a current council member cannot be taken away. There is a provision under state law for, at, uh, within, I believe it's thirty days before the first of the year, a council member can give notice, a current council member can give notice that they do not want the salary for the following year. And then for council persons who would be elected and their term would begin in April, um, the council could adopt an ordinance now that would provide that the salary going forward for those persons and those elected afterwards would, um, be zero. And the ordinance that is enclosed with your materials is an effort to accomplish what the council directed.
If a council member decides to withhold the salary, does it have to be justified for January one? Or could, could it be some date within the year? Say for example, April one?
Well, if, what it says in state law is to be valid, the notification, um, must be sent at least thirty days before the start of the elected officer's next taxable year. And the notification applies only to that taxable year although the notification may be renewed annually as provided in this subdivision. So it sounds like in order for you folks to give up your salary next year, you would need to do that at least thirty days before January one. And then if your term of office extends into a, the next year, in order to give up that year's salary, which would be twenty eighteen, then you would need to file another notice again within thirty days before.
In other words, we're gonna split the calendar year?
It says it's gotta be before the beginning of the count of the taxable year, so most of you probably on a calendar year. I guess.
Any other questions? All right. So the next item is ambulance service fee.
Uh, so ambulance service fee is being proposed for the two thousand seventeen budget. Um, it is our intent to only collect enough revenue to offset the cost of the fee. Um, the support fee is to help cover capital expenses that are related to the construction of the new EMS facility. Um, the fee will be billed, the plan is to build a fee on the monthly water and sewer invoice. The fee won't be part of the water and sewer tariff or scheduled fees, but it will just, the, the water and sewer bill will just be used as a source of delivery. Um, based on the council consensus at the eleven-one work session, the plan is to allocate the new ambulance fee to the water and sewer customers according to customer type. So as you can see, um, on the staff report, the commercial, industrial, multifamily and public authority customers would get a ten dollar a fee, or a ten dollar a month fee, and the residential customers would be the remainder of the fee divided by the total number of residential customers. Um, so a little different from the work session, we actually had the exact amount in there. Uh, but this way, based on the number of, uh, residents that we have, because the water and sewer residents, number of people can change frequently if we get a new house or whatever. So we're just going to say that the current estimate for two thousand seventeen is one dollar and sixty-four cents a month for residential customers. So staff recommends that the council approve the attached ambulance service, uh, fee policy and then the allocation schedule listed above.
Now, you said ten dollars per month, isn't it ten dollars per meter per month? And if a commercial customer had more than one meter, there would be more than one charge? So is it a meter, per meter charge or is it a per customer charge?
Um, so it's a per meter charge, yes.
So this, this is coming up, uh, next meeting, the twenty-second, for a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Howardy, a question. In many cases, some residential customers have two meters. Is that gonna be the same? Are they gonna be, um, paying a fee for two meters then?
So you're referring to like a lawn meter?
Right.
And then a regular meter? Um, so the way that this is set up would be based on all meter types, but, um, you would have the authority to, to change that. Because some of the multifamily customers that, um, that I showed in the report of how many were, some of those are just simply like laundry meters, you know, at an apartment complex or things like that, so they're not necessarily all the main water source meters.
So in other words, a resident, a residential customer that has two meters would be charged, um, basically, um, over three dollars, three dollars and eighteen cents or twenty-eight cents?
But they would, they wouldn't be charged for a lawn meter?
Well, that's-
That's, that's what I'm guessing.
And a lawn meter, they wouldn't be charged for both?
They'd be charged for both, my understanding, is that correct?
But there's no people with the lawn meter.
So that would be, that would be for council, I guess, to discuss how you want that set up?
I don't know how, what all the lawn meters are like as far as what they, what they serve, but, um, I just have experience with residential, that the lawn meters are part of the residential. So you're paying the residential, then you offset the pay another fee for the meter? That's, that's a double, double charging.
But your, your calculation is based on the number of meters, including the lawn meters, am I correct?
So the, the original calculation was on the number of, we, we just took it, divided by the number of customers. So some customers may have a lawn meter and a residential meter. Um, typically, there's not two main meters on one customer. It would be if there was a lawn meter. Um, so our original numbers were based on the customer types and the customer count. So that's the number of active accounts that are in the water and sewer system.
But this is, that was modified and now it's based on the number of meters, not the number of customers?
Um, I think that you, it can kind of be both in a sense because some of the multifamily customers, some of the multifamily customers, some of them only just have a lawn meter on that account. So it really can be, it could be either or. This is, these numbers are based on just the customer count, but we weren't going through every single account and determining if they had a main water source meter or if they just had a lawn account. Because some of the multifamily, for instance, could be like the laundry at the multi-unit complex, but all of the apartments have, they're individually as residential. So it's, it really is, right, this was just based on the number of customers that the water and sewer department has. Yeah, but there's different, we didn't go in and break down with each customer if it was just had a lawn meter or just had, or had both, et cetera.
So basically, you're saying that it is divided by customers rather than meters?
Yeah, that's how this was initially.
Yeah, I have some comments. I was surprised at the information about the, uh, multifamily and the multifamily that have a single meter. So I did a little bit of, uh, work on this. And I, this, this is preliminary information. So preliminary information, seventy-five customers were listed for multifamily. And looking at the data, I, um, looked at how many of these multifamily, um, meters had more than six people? See if that sounded right? Six units. So I looked at only those that had six units because of each meter's paying ten dollars and dividing ten dollars by a dollar sixty-four is about six. So I came up with twenty-three plus fifteen, thirty-eight meters that have more than six units in them. And then, uh, what I did is to go through, go through the whole list and, um, put down how much they would pay for those that are, have more than six, how much they would pay if they paid at the rate of one dollar and sixty-four cents for all the units that they had. So when I say units, here's one at forty, thirty-eight, thirty-four, thirty, sixteen, twenty-three, and so on down the list. So I came up with this, uh, first list of being, um, one thousand, one hundred and fourteen and that comes out to eighty-four times twelve. And so I did that for both, both lists. And so I'd like to give this information to the staff and they can check my data, check my calculations and see if I'm correct. So I came up with, um, if we don't charge people for every more than six units, the city will be losing, well, my first calculation, losing as much as thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. If we take off one of these, um, units, now units are meters that has seventy-three units on it, we lose one thousand three oh eight. And that brings it down to four thousand six twelve. So that, uh, I'd like to, the staff to check- So, that, I'd like the staff to check my data and to see if it is correct. But I come up with at least $10,500 we're gonna lose if we don't charge for beyond two meters.
Now, do you want to address that?
Ken, there, we would actually be recovering the whole cost of the fee through the distribution by customer type, so there would be no loss of money, it would just...
It's just a matter of...
What?
Who's paying? That's the essence.
So, it would go to the residential customers versus the multifamily customers, you're saying?
Right, well, some of the residential are in the big unit.
So, Ken, you're curious to know if we redistributed how we charge people? That's what you're interested in, right?
Right, right, because as it's set up now, we're gonna be undercharging our hair of the multifamily.
So, perhaps now that Brian's here, we talked about this last week, I have concerns about changing the distribution model for how we charge people. The way the water and sewer is set up, we charge based upon these categories already, commercial, industrial, multifamily, and public authority residential. And I think Ken might be proposing that we charge based upon number of units, which might be something that we keep under apartment licenses, multifamily. Do we even keep that job, the number of units per each facility?
We would know how many rental licenses per building.
But it's only for rentals, too.
Right.
So, so my concern, if we did try and break down this charge into different models using different types of data that we have at the city, is that we would maybe either, either to doing it inaccurately, because we're not, it's not a consistent model that we've developed yet, but also I'm concerned that we could possibly do that for residential rental type units, but we would have no equivalency for commercial and industrial units. So, we'd basically be trying to be fair, fair, however we, however we define fair for residential, but industrial and commercial could include Walmart in one end of the scale and dripless marketing on the other end. And so, how would we divide this fee out to be maybe per square footage of each building? It'd be, it becomes very complicated immediately, and I'm concerned that legally we enter into a really risky gray area by trying to like be more fair or actually creating more inequality.
For which one?
For our city, for everybody in our city.
The result obtained, however you figured it out, needs to be defensible, and it needs to be in some way reasonable, and, you know, does it impact everybody exactly the same? Well, I'm not sure that that is, that could be the goal, but I'm not sure that's gonna be possible. So, I think we'll end up having to fall back, the, did we choose a method that was reasonable and fair, given that we were trying to allocate this broadly to the people who potentially, you know, who are served with it, whether they use it or not, there's certainly a standby availability if you do need it.
So, basically, using the existing payment schedule that water and sewer aligns with is a consistent and thus fair, even though it's not equal in every way we want to be, it is a consistent model that we can use, that we know works?
I mean, I think, I think that that is a way, how did you, how did you decide to do this? Well, we took utility customers, we have data that breaks it down into these categories, and we spread it this way because we felt that that was a reasonable allocation. And I think we, there will always be the ability to quibble, no matter which way it falls, we just need to have considered it and arrived at something which you all thought was reasonable.
And to put aside your point on what I'm trying to say, is I really respect the idea of being very fair about how we're distributing this cost based upon users, so can I appreciate the idea of doing it with residential? I think that once we start trying to do it with residential, however, we're opening a can of worms that we should be doing with industrial and commercial clients as well, or customers. And I don't, I don't know that I'm comfortable starting to go down a rabbit hole like that, I feel like that's a lot of conversation, and it can open a lot more problems and challenges to the city.
Well, I, I just looked at the multifamily, single meter, and as I said at the beginning, about half of them are paying their fair share. Because half of them are, are less than six, they're paying $10. But then, these other ones that are not paying for these additional rental units, they're, they're getting by with maybe as much as $13,000, $14,000. And I don't, on my list, I don't have all of the cost potential of $1 on the list yet. That's all I'm trying to do, I'm just trying to make it more fair.
And just so I...
It's never, it's not gonna be perfect, I agree with that, it's not gonna be perfect, but it'll be what's more fair and what you propose, that's my point.
And, and I'm not trying to quibble with your point, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're saying. You're saying that there are apartment complexes that have multiple units that are served from a single meter?
Right.
It'd be like landlord provides water?
Yes, yeah.
I just wanna make sure I had it.
Yeah.
Because I was following what you were saying, and just a clarification.
Now, Amy and Berta about commercial, I haven't thought about commercial, but it seems to be with commercial, the way to make that more fair is to do on a basis of square footage. So, you have a big box versus a small business.
I think, I think you're just gonna start to run into some, some problems. First of all, I don't know that we have readily available, in a way that we can access quickly, square footages of things, and then start doing comparisons.
Well, the assessor came up to my property, started measuring up things on my property, so...
But that's my point, that's in a different circumstance.
The assessor should know the square footage for property.
I'm not saying the assessor doesn't, I'm just saying, now you're saying we go, we go draw from this data pool and try to mix it with our meter pool of knowledge, and then, I think you also start to create a circumstance where now, instead of having a clear, "We did this by," and then insert the rationale for getting your denominator, you say, "Well, in this case, we took this number and used it as the denominator, and then we took, well, went over here and said, 'Well, we'll make these square footages over here, but not over here, and then we'll bring that in and somehow drag it together,' and pretty soon you're gonna have this mishmash, and I don't know how defensible that's gonna be." I, we'd have to work through and see what the product is that comes out of it.
Well, I don't know how defensible it is to charge $10 to a big box, is that correct? $10 to a big box?
With the way that this is set up, yes.
That's the way it's set up, $10 to a big box, and you go downtown, and you charge $10 to Batty Brothers. They're both paying the same.
Yeah, the, the short answer to that is, we divided it based on meter, commercial meters.
Number.
Period. That's how we did it. Was it exact? Was it entirely fair? No, but it was reasonable.
It's far from fair.
Again, I'm not here to argue you with that, but I'm just saying, we need to have a consistent way of determining what that denominator was.
You're giving us the legal perspective on what the city can or cannot legally do.
I'm trying.
Thank you.
I think square footage is a better way.
All right, any other comments? I'm gonna mull over the next two. Work session, let's review. We're gonna have a work session.
Yep.
All right, that concludes our televised portion, and we leave these chairs and we'll go to the table and start talking.